Good morning. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be led by Pastor Darrell Sanderlin of the Rock Assembly of God, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Casey Bernathy of Boy Scouts Troop 117. Please stand.
Lord Jesus, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you today on behalf of this meeting. We pray for your blessing upon our city and upon this council. We ask, Lord, that you would give special blessing upon each commitment and her leadership position, Lord, that you would only bless them in their duties here today, but in their homes. And, Lord, for the staff that they give direction to, we pray that you would bless them. And, Lord, we pray that you would give direction and peace and guidance through all that is said and done. May your name be glorified. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Can you please show me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Casey. All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and we have a couple of presentations that I will do from the front. Thank you, sir. Why don't we have our friends from the Parks Department come forward? September is going to be Senior Center Month, and we wanted to make sure everybody knew that. So we have a little presentation this morning, and I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas each year, the National Council on Aging recognizes September as Senior Center Month. And whereas older residents are valued members of our community who invest their wisdom and experience to enrich the lives of others. And whereas, the city of Oklahoma City offers numerous facilities dedicated to the health and well-being of older residents. And whereas, these include the Will Rogers Park Senior Activity Center located at 3501 Pat Murphy Drive, the MAPS III Senior Health and Wellness Center located at 11501 North Rockwell Avenue, and the Pete White Senior Center or Senior Health and Wellness Center located at, excuse me, 4021 South Walker Avenue. And whereas, a third and fourth MAPS III Senior Health and Wellness Centers are currently under construction in far south Oklahoma City and in northeast Oklahoma City, and a fifth center is funded through MAPS IV to provide optimal accessibility in the densest parts of OKC. And whereas, offering a variety of programs, services, and activities, our senior centers provide countless hours of support and encouragement to older adults. And whereas, our senior centers help older residents meet new friends, explore common interests, and improve their health. And whereas, this year's theme is Discover Yours. And whereas, Oklahoma City is proud to recognize the important role that senior centers play in our community and the many benefits they provide to our valued senior residents. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim September 2023 to be Senior Center Month in Oklahoma City.
Well, thank you very much. We are very proud of the services that we offer and very excited for the two new senior wellness centers that will open, we think, before the end of this calendar year. And we're excited. We've got Melinda here from the Parks Department, and I might ask you to say a few words and also introduce who's with you today.
Thank you, Mayor Holt. Yes, our senior centers could not be more important to our residents. As our baby boomer generation and as my generation is starting to age, we are absolutely enjoying those new senior centers with all the robust activities and socialization that we get to do. Especially as more important as past COVID-19, reconnecting with our friends and our families that we have created at our senior centers. With us today, I have Ms. Anita, who's one of our members at the Pete White Senior Center, Ms. Lynn, who is one of our employees at the senior center at Pete White, and then also Mr. Anthony Sledge, who has been a longtime Parks and Recreation employee and has become our stellar Senior Center Coordinator, Employee of the Year, basically, for us, really helping ensure that we've provided a robust amount of programming and activities at our centers for everyone to enjoy. So we appreciate the ongoing support from our voters for MAPS in order to keep continuing to build these wonderful centers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Let's hear it for our Parks team. All right, Faisal, if you want to come forward, join me up here. And, oh, yes, and also Leslie. Yeah, come over here. It's a gang. Well, come over, join me over here now. Well, maybe first of all, just to kind of frame this a little bit. So, of course, we take off the summers, much like school does, for our Teacher of the Month recognitions. And so we're kind of restarting it for the academic year, and it thought might be a nice time to kind of hear from the sponsoring organization that actually organizes all of this. And of course, that is Rotary 29, the 29th oldest club in the world. And we have the president here today, Leslie Massett. And Leslie, maybe just tell us a little bit about what you guys do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members. The Rotary Club of Oklahoma City has had the privilege of partnering with your office, the council members, and the city of Oklahoma City since 2010, sponsoring a Teacher of the Month. We go and recognize and celebrate those teachers who are making a tremendous impact in their classroom and on the lives of their students in the Oklahoma City school districts, not just Oklahoma City public schools, but all those within the Oklahoma City metropolitan area. And so it's a privilege to be here to kick off this year's with Faisal, and we look forward to all the teachers who will be celebrating throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all you guys do. We appreciate it. And as Leslie previewed, it is in fact time to recognize Faisal Madney as our, did I get that right?
Perfect.
As our Teacher of the Month for August. And we'd like to learn just a little bit more about you, so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Faisal Madney has been named Teacher of the Month for August 2023 by the Oklahoma City Public Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. And whereas, Faisal is the physical education teacher at Wheeler Middle School, whose main goal is to teach his students to believe in themselves by building their confidence. And whereas, Faisal recognizes the struggles of his students and is dedicated to building trusting relationships with them. And whereas, Faisal believes in serving as a passionate role model, supporting his students both inside and outside the classroom. And whereas, Faisal works to build community relationships to better serve his students. And whereas, Faisal implements an interdisciplinary approach to teaching, recognizing the importance of holistic education of both the mind and the body. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City, that they do hereby recognize and commend Faisal Madney on his selection as August 2023 Teacher of the Month by the Oklahoma City Public Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Thank you, Amy. Now, this is a resolution, so it's going to be voted on by the council. And so why don't we take care of that business first? Let's see if we can get a motion in a second. Cast your votes. I wish to vote aye. This is always a very dramatic part of the process. Faisal passes unanimously. All right. Well, we would love to hear a few words from you, Faisal. We're very grateful for your work and just getting to spend a few minutes with you this morning. I think your energy is probably very welcome at Wheeler Middle School. And I know you must be beloved by your students, and you certainly were recognized enough to achieve this honor. So we're very grateful for your service to our young people, and we'd love to hear a few words from you.
A few words, as I was told, right? First off, I want to thank Ms. Jackson for bringing me on board at Wheeler Middle School. In the past, I always had a chip on my shoulder to prove that I wasn't just a gym teacher. And I did above my job duty to prove that. And Ms. Jackson has believed in me more than anybody in my career. So, thank you. To my daughter, this is for you. She's my wife, because the minute you have a child in your life, you are on 24/7 surveillance. And I believe the same for when you become a teacher, your students are watching. So this is for your future Teacher of the Year when she graduates, hopefully. Our job is a job that now more than ever, post-pandemic, is extremely critical. And I came to realize that we need to change it completely from scooter tag and basically recess education to fitness education. We need to make our students fit and literate, as I tell my students. My students come in, we meditate for mental health. We run, we jump rope for a total of 15 minutes for cardio. We're working on push-ups for strength and conditioning, and they know the effects of muscle atrophy as you get older. And then for dessert, we play a game. But the main thing is the fitness education. And I think that that's slowly, I'm selling it to my students. It's only been less than three weeks, but they're buying in and they're seeing the results, that that's where confidence comes from, is by doing the challenging things. So... Was that short?
All right. Let's hear it for Mr. Madney. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. We have a couple more items under Office of the Mayor. We have Items 3B and 3C. These are appointments to the Building Code Commission and the Park Commission. We can take those with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item four, items from council. We have Item 4A, and it is my understanding this, that Councilman Stenssifer, you may have a request to strike?
Yes, after discussing it with the city manager, we're going to move to strike it at this time to be brought back at a later date, please.
Okay. So there'll be a motion here to strike Item 4A. Have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item five, City Manager reports. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, the only items that we have on today are the sales and use tax report and then the claims and payroll. On the sales and use tax report, another strong sales tax check. We had 4.9% growth basically in sales tax. Combined with sales and use tax, we're $1.8 million over target to start the year. Great way to start the year. I will say that preliminary numbers that we're getting on September show this slowing pretty significantly, and so we'll just continue to monitor that, keep you updated. But it's a really good way to start the year. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Item seven is request for uncontested continuances. The one item listed on the agenda was a typo. And, oh, you were right. I skipped Journal of Council Proceedings. How about that? All right. Item six, A and B, we can take this one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now, item seven, request for uncontested continuances. Mr. City Manager, what was the verdict on how to resolve this issue of accidentally listing Item 9K when you meant to list Item 11K?
So 9K will be stricken from the agenda as it's listed, and we'll just bring that back at the next meeting. We're contacting the applicant on that. But that was, again, by error. The correct item should have been on Page 13, Item 11K, and that's companion to the resolution that we just struck on items from council. So Item 11K is the item that we are striking. We'll bring that back at a later time.
Okay.
Then if you go to Page 14, Item 11P, 1 and 2, there's only one item on this one, so we're striking both 1 and 2. The owner has removed this property, or this building, so we're striking that. On Page 14, again, Item 11Q, 1, unsecured structures, all of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 2816 North Brookline Avenue, the owner secured. Item G, 528 Southwest 11th Street, the owner secured. Item H, 2307 Southeast 13th Street, the owner secured. Item J, 1910 Northeast 23rd Street, the owner secured. Item N, 1423 Northwest 34th Street, the owner secured. Item O, 2440 Southwest 43rd Street, the owner secured. And then Item P, 400 Southwest 44th Street, the owner has secured. Continuing on Page 14, under abandoned buildings, Item 11R1, all of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 528 Southwest 11th Street, the owner secured. Item C, 2307 Southeast 13th Street, the owner secured. Item I, 1423 Northwest 34th Street, the owner secured. Item J, 2440 Southwest 43rd Street, the owner secured. And Item K, 400 Southwest 44th Street, the owner secured. That's all the items that I have.
All right. So, okay, just to make sure everybody understands, Item 9K and 11K will both be struck today, as well as Item 11P and the items under Q and R that the City Manager mentioned. Okay. Now we're at Item 8, revocable permits and events. Item 8A is a revocable permit with OKC Black Eats for the Foodie Fest on October 7th in Bicentennial Park. And we have Apollo Woods here to speak.
It's my first time, so...
Usually people come up and they kind of tell about the event. That's all. It's your chance for an advertisement.
So Foodie Fest is, this will be the second time we've done Foodie Fest, which is rebranded from a previous concept. So this year, we're having it at Bicentennial Park, October 7th, from 11 to 4. The focus on Foodie Fest is to emphasize supporting our local minority and black-owned restaurants and local businesses. So so far, we have approximately 44 local businesses here. And the emphasis is to raise awareness on those who may always have access to some of the larger events. Last year, we contributed to about $291,000 in direct spending through Foodie Fest, and we anticipate having more of an impact here in Bicentennial Park. So the permit allows us, I guess I'm hearing today, is closing the intersection on Walker and Couch and CoCor during the course of the event, for that day. And the event will end at 4 o'clock, and we'll finish our cleanup before 10 o'clock at that time evening.
All right. Well, thank you. Councilwoman Hammond.
Excited to host this event here in Ward 6, and I will move for approval.
Councilwoman, may I add something real quick? Thank you. Thank you for the service you're providing. Just last week, my best friend, I've known since high school, she's married to someone who has Jamaican descent, and his mother-in-law was in town staying at our airport. And Charity reached out, and she said, "Mom-in-law's in town, she's looking for food recommendations." Follow-up text. And if they're black-owned, let us know. And I found, of course, your website. There was an Oklahoman article, but you really did, you do provide a service. So I just really wanted to emphasize that, so.
Thank you.
All right. We are still awaiting a motion. There we go. Motion in a second. Cast your votes when you can. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Apollo.
Thank you.
All right. 8B is a revocable right-of-way use permit with AIDS Walk of Oklahoma City to hold the AIDS Walk of OKC on October 1st along West Sheridan. And we have Marcus Whitworth here.
Morning. So this is our 25th year of continuous operation in Oklahoma City as the AIDS Walk of Oklahoma City. So we'll be celebrating that anniversary with this event on October 1st, which includes a walk through downtown to raise awareness for our cause, as well as some fundraising opportunities in order to raise money to support the direct care agencies within Oklahoma City that support those living with HIV and AIDS in our community. There are approximately 7,600 people living in the state of Oklahoma that are HIV-positive. Of those, 1 in 7 are unaware of their status. So it's very important to us as an organization that we not only provide care for those that are aware of their status, but we also create opportunities for everyone to have an opportunity to know their personal status. And as such, we'll have, for the first time this year, someone on site that's providing access to buy-mail-at-home testing kits that will be sent out. So it's 100% discreet and private and something you're able to do for the first time relatively recently from the privacy of your own home. So encourage everybody to come out and attend. And we're looking forward to this event.
Great. Thank you. Words 6 and 7, feel free to jump in.
What time?
It'll be noon to 2 will be our festival that Sunday, and then the walk begins at 2 o'clock, and we'll wrap up by 3.
Just want to make sure everybody can hear that wants to participate, so we all know what time to show up.
Thank you.
And if I can speak for the both of us, we definitely understand the importance of knowing your status and support, and move for approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 8C is a revocable right-of-way use permit with the Down Syndrome Association of Central Oklahoma to hold the Down Syndrome Festival in 5K on September 30th on West Sheridan. And we have Sarah Sewell here from the Down Syndrome Association.
Thank you, council members and Mr. Mayor. Yes, our event's going to be held September 30th. We will start at 8 o'clock with a 5K and 1-mile fund run. So we're asking those streets to be closed in front of the myriad botanical gardens of Walker, 14th and 9th Street and back. Those will actually open back up after 10:30, after our racers are backed safely to the myriad gardens. And then we will start our awareness walk shortly after that, around 9:45 or 10. We expect about 4,000 people to attend our event. After the awareness walk, which is around John Rex Charter School, we will make it back to the myriad gardens where our festival will take place. And we have bounce houses and carnival games and cotton candy. And probably the highlight of the show will be our self-advocates doing a talent show. So we would like for everybody to attend. You can still sign up to register for the run. It's still posted at our website, so we would love for everybody to come out and join us and help promote our mission of acceptance and inclusion for people with Down Syndrome, so that they can have a meaningful life and supporting those families and those loved ones when they get that first diagnosis. And as a mother, I can attest to this organization being one of the one things that have kept me going. So, thank you.
Thank you. I've been to this event, as you know, and, yeah, it's a wonderful day. Councilwoman Hammond stepped out, so we'll just take a motion from anybody who wants to jump in when the window opens. There we go. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Have a great event, Sarah. Okay. We'll now recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have Items A through I, and staff is not requesting executive session on G2 and H2.
I have questions about H1.
Okay.
And I know for, I didn't get the information that I needed, so I would like to look at going into executive session to have more information, because I do understand this is not the same case from before, as far as this officer that's involved and named in this particular incident.
Okay. So are you wishing to make a motion to go into executive session on H1?
I am.
Okay. Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Fails 2 to 4, so we will not go into executive session. Do you wish to pull it out for a separate vote?
I sure would. Thank you.
All right. We are still on the OC-MFA agenda. Why don't we just go ahead and do that one? We've got, this is Item H1, if somebody'd like to make a motion. Just H1. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes 6 to 1. And then we're back on the rest of the OC-MFA, which we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC-MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have Items A through G we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we'll adjourn OCPPA and reconvene... Oh. Well, we've already adjourned OCPPA, but I guess, go ahead. This is under the OCPPA docket. You did sign up. Obviously took us by surprise. We don't usually have anyone sign up on PPA.
Hello? Okay. Yeah, I tried to catch y'all before you voted. Item D, I would, it says "public hearing." I would like to have more information on that, please. It does say "public hearing."
Right. So a public hearing is an opportunity for the public to state their comments on the item.
That's what I signed up for.
Right. Feel free to go ahead.
I would like to have more information on this item, please.
Okay. I guess we can get with you at a different time and...
Yeah. We could provide you some additional information.
Yeah, we could provide you some additional information. There's information in the packet on this, but we can get you some additional information on this.
Okay, if you would, please.
Yeah.
Kind of where on the fairgrounds it is and stuff like that.
Right.
Because it's...
It's on the north, it's on the north end of the fairgrounds, and it's property for a, the northeast end of the, of the fairgrounds, and it's property for a substation.
Okay.
There's a substation built there by OGN.
From what I read and everything, it's, it's being really vague on what it was saying and stuff.
Yeah, it's, it's a sale of property to OGN for them to build a substation.
Okay. See, that's, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, because there's maybe people that sees this and watching online that they wouldn't, they wouldn't even have a clue. They're thinking that the fairgrounds and city council is trying to pull wool over their eyes. So I just try to get it.
Got it.
I'll be back.
All right, we're in the council meeting now on item nine. And Joy, you might as well stay there because you've signed up for the consent docket. Why don't you go ahead and just knock out your comments regarding item nine?
I've got a bunch of them.
My zoning thing, normal, normal zoning thing. And Y and Z, a little bit more information.
Okay, we, we'll be able to maybe have someone meet you outside. I mean, that's, we're not going to be able to do that here, but...
And then AE, AP, AQ.
What about them?
It's about streets and stuff, and I've been trying for the last five, six years to get the city to come out and actually look at our street from Oklahoma to Walker. From Walker on up, Walker's been done. Eighth Street from Robinson or from Broadway all the way down to Walker was redone. And there's little, literally craters and stuff in our street, especially down towards Oklahoma, on the east side of the tracks there. And stuff. And I keep asking the engineer and stuff, when is our going, when is our street is actually going to be put on the list? A lot of these ones that they keep redoing has been done three years ago, four years ago. If they're that bad where they've actually got to go back in and redo the street in three, four years, two years, whatever, then we need to have a conversation, y'all, well, y'all need to have a conversation with, with the contractors that's doing this and relook at the contracts that y'all are actually doing with these contractors and not just do rubber stamp with the contractors. There's, I can, I could probably name 30 different streets and neighborhoods that actually need to be redone and not all these thoroughfares. And a lot of them, they may have just a two-inch by two-inch pothole in them, and y'all go out there and you repay miles of street.
30 seconds, please.
And there's several others that I've got coming up, but it's just, there's, let's quit doing business as usual when it comes to streets and stuff. I understand that people that has ways and means and stuff of getting y'all to do their streets and everything and maybe businesses and stuff, but let's look at others besides that, please. I don't know how, how the process is of y'all picking streets and stuff, but it, I've been for five, six years trying to get our street, our little street, done, but it's, it's been all the way around it.
Thank you. All right, we have a scheduled presentation on item 9BF. Is there any other council member who wishes to comment on something or pull anything out for a separate vote?
Yes, Mayor. Just to make a comment on 8H and then, and actually to hear actually about the conclusion of that, because that was an area people were really interested in. And then just some clarification on item AN and its streetscape project, and that is...
So AH and AN, is that what?
Yes, sir.
Got it.
That's it, thank you.
Okay.
Item AD.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we'll take them in order then. That means we'll start with AD, Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, looking at some of these improvements, I'm curious to know as far as, there were a couple of other improvements that I were, or enhancements, if you will, that I did not see, so I'm curious to know where we are as far as being able to work on those enhancements. And those enhancements that I'm referring to are specifically the sign, the name as far as the Willoughby Johnson Recreation Center. You cannot see it above that awning. And also being able to have the name of the building located on 10th, on the side of 10th Street, the view of 10th Street. That has, was also a concern. And I know as we were looking at some other things as far as inside the building, I wasn't sure if we were looking at the, I see aquatic area, but specifically when I'm thinking aquatic area, it was the steps of coming out of the chute, if you, I know that's not the name of it, but the slide, but it shoots you out, so I guess you could call it a chute tube. But there's, there's some steps that I was concerned about there as well. And I know we were, I do see the parking lot, so I know there were some things that we were looking at through that parking lot. So just really those couple of ads, I'm curious to know where we are with those, and if we don't have them, how we can make sure we get those added, please.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Eric Quinger, Public Works Director. So the project that we're talking about is the Willoughby Johnson Recreation Center. And the project is still in its punch list phase. So it did open successfully, but it does have a list of items that the contractor's still working to complete that also includes some of the items that are being investigated further that Councilwoman had just mentioned. The items that are on this change order today are the ones that we were actually able to get negotiated with the contractor, and we're asking for the council to incorporate those officially into the project. But I don't believe that this will be the last change order on this project as we go through the final completion. So we will continue to look at, and I'll work with the Parks Director on the sign, the new sign on 10th, and also the steps at the slide, but we haven't found a final resolution on those three just yet.
Okay, I would, I would like for us to, if you, I can keep getting updated at least where we are, that would be great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up is AH, Councilman Cooper.
Yes. Would you mind providing an update on this item, and then I'm going to have some questions for us, please?
So item AH is actually just residential sidewalk repairs that were done in the area bounded by Northwest 50th, I-44, May, and Hefner Parkway, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, no, please, go ahead.
It's okay, so we have completed that work as a part of the 2017 bond issue and happy to answer any additional questions on that item.
Sorry, I got a little ahead of myself thinking about AN, but yes, no, this is wonderful. I really appreciate the coordination that you all did with Shamika, with the neighborhood. She's wonderful, and they really appreciated her level of community engagement. This was in Mayfair West area, and they'd long needed this resurfacing, and also coordinated the implementation of sidewalks. And these were requests that they had, they're very concerned about traffic calming on Independence, as you know, and I look forward to seeing the next steps there, but just wanted to commend you all on that. AN?
Oh, yeah, feel free to go on to AN.
So item AN is a joint project, and this is actually a project agreement for council's consideration today for the work that is planned on Northwest 23rd from Western to North Broadway Avenue. It started out originally just as a 2017 bond project, but we were successful in receiving ACOG grant for this, and so the amount of available funds for construction significantly went up. It originally was about a little over a million-dollar project, but with the federal share of over $5 million being contributed toward the project, it is now a $6.3 million project, where we're looking at a street enhancement. Some of the features that are to be included, and we've gone through a number of outreach meetings, and the plumber report was actually approved several months ago, but the features are is that the roadway will be configured to a four-lane section. The medians are planned for removal, and the reason for that is that we're looking to improve the amenity space and increase the walkability in front of the businesses along Northwest 23rd, but to also shorten the crossing distances as much as possible at the intersections, and then also look at lighting and landscaping opportunities along the edges of the street. Plans are not yet complete, they're expected to be completed later this fall, so those will return to the council for consideration prior to the bidding of the work. And again, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So my first question, I actually just answered myself as I read a little bit more carefully. Initially, I saw where it talks about dedicated bike paths, but those are north-south paths, they're not east-west, so that solves that for me. I'm a little concerned when I look at the pros and cons of the item where we're heading, Concept 2, it looks like. And here's my concerns, and I would hope that as we move toward the final plans, we're able to address these concerns. Give me just one moment, please. I just want to make sure I'm citing the right information. It requires me looking at multiple pages there. Oh, there it is, okay. So the problem is, I see it, and this is on page 7, for those following along. This corridor, by the way, Director Ringer already knows all this, so this is not for him, this is, it is for him in terms of, I have a problem I'm about to identify, and then I need help getting to solution, but I'd like everyone else to hear this following along. So this corridor where we're doing this street enhancement has an overall collision rate of 1,070. This collision rate is three to five times higher than statewide rates. The fatal collision rate through this project area is 4.57, and that is four to six times higher than statewide rates. Okay, so that's the problem, right? The problem are these higher-than-average statewide collision rates. And we know that once you start, I wish Max Harris or Justin Henry were here right now, you probably know it too, Director Ringer, but once you get hit by a car at a speed of over 35 miles per hour, suddenly your life expectancy rate drops considerably. So then, when I turn to the Concept 2 on page 9, the direction we're heading that you've just described, I, I am confused, because if the problem are the traffic collisions, if the problem are my constituents reaching out regularly about a car hitting them at 23rd and Walker, them seeing someone almost get hit by a car at 23rd and Walker, and that's regularly, I get those sorts of updates. And I live by here, so I know this. I don't understand that when we look at advantages and disadvantages, when I look at item 2 under disadvantages, we cite as a disadvantage faster traffic speeds anticipated. So in other words, the work we're about to do, here, make it make sense, hear what I am saying, the work, the money, the $6.3 million of taxpayer dollars we are about to invest in this project does not address the collision problem, the speed problem. In fact, we anticipate higher traffic speeds. Number two, it does not eliminate conflict points at intersections, the very thing that my residents are deeply concerned about, deeply concerned. It is priority one. Number three, high number of traffic incidents likely to continue. Number four, long crossing distances at intersection corners. I, I don't understand. I, I'm genuinely confused why we would spend $6.3 million on something I am so excited about. Like truly, I have bragged about this uptown streetscape, particularly watching the Paseo one get underway. If some of my fellow council members are confused why I am just now bringing this up, it is because this item appeared on the agenda on Friday. During my agenda briefing, I asked for clarification, and only this morning, as I sat down, did I get this clarification. So I had no other time, because I'm, I'm sure there are probably some council members maybe right now a bit annoyed that I am bringing this up in public. I've heard this sort of critique before, why can't we handle these things outside the horseshoe? But I just got this information. So this is not me trying to be combative, this is literally me asking if the problem we have identified are traffic collisions, pedestrian safety. Why would we do this? And if we're going to do this, what are we doing between this point in the report and the final plans to make sure that pedestrian safety, traffic calming, and the reduction of traffic collisions receive the priority that residents are asking for and their elected representative is asking for as well? And I know Planning and Public Works have the talent to pull this off. I know you do, I know you do.
So if I might respond, so the actual council agenda items to receive officially and to start the agreement process with ODOT so that we can complete the design, what this will allow is that when Oklahoma City completes the design, the project will be constructed by ODOT. So just for clarity, the item today is not the approval of the report that was previously approved by the council. Simply the engineers working from that approved report, and there were a lot of stakeholder meetings, Uptown 23rd, we had a lot of residential meetings. I mean, it was probably a year-long process in 2022 where we did come up with a recommendation for consideration, and it is somewhat of a compromise. I mean, we were really battling two different recommendations, one to either keep the medians or one to remove the medians, and there was finally a consensus reached where the removal of the medians was felt to be the best option for 23rd Street. I believe that's the only reason that the speeds are anticipated to increase, because we do note that a median typically provides some level of traffic calming, but we also have not removed the on-street parking, which also provides traffic calming. So with those features, it's not as if all the calming features have been removed, but the median's being removed so that it can enhance the district and provide for a more walkable space in front of the businesses along 23rd, directly adjacent to the businesses. Things that can be addressed in the design, the consultant will absolutely do their best to improve the traffic crossings at all the intersections. Many of the intersections actually reduce in width because of the median removal, but not all of them. So there are some that can't be modified because not every intersection had a median to be removed. But they have looked at removing left-turn lanes when not necessary to shorten those crossing distances. Certain intersections still require those left-turn lanes, and all those things are going to be features that you're going to see in that final design that'll be presented to the council this fall. But it was not the intent to make it less walkable or less safe. It was one that had intent with all the stakeholders, business, neighboring community, to build a project that met everybody's need.
Erica, I got a question. Didn't we just redo 23rd Street four or five years ago and put those center medians in and completely changed the look of it?
It's been a lot longer than four or five years, but no, it was redone. It was one of the city's first street enhancement projects more than a decade ago, but yes, it was previously redone at that time.
Councilman, like, I do that all the time, like, wasn't it just a few years ago that, you know, and suddenly...
I just remember a truck taking out the Tower Theater sign.
Really?
Because it hung over the street while they were working at the, a semi-truck came by and blew out the bottom of the Tower Theater sign.
Oh, I did not. Thanks for that. What can we do? I hear what you're saying, and by the way, I, you know, Councilwoman Hammond and I participated in those meetings many times over, virtual and person. I don't disagree with this concept. What I am asking is how do we elevate it to address in further reducing the speeds, further increasing pedestrian safety? In other words, what I worry is happening here, just by looking at the advantages versus disadvantages, I really wish people at home, by the way, and this kind of goes to Joy's comment, I really wish that when they're at home and they're watching these debates play out, I wish they could see what I am looking at right now. I wish they could see Concept 2. I wish they could see the advantages versus disadvantages laid out, because they're really relying on me, or they're relying on opening it up at home as opposed to just being presented to them. So I just want to make that, that clear. Even the people watching at home, or watching here in this gallery don't get to see what I'm showing.
Can I ask a question? Can you, can you tell me or try to explain, like, what, the reason for removing the median... Can you, can you tell me or try to explain, like, what the reason for removing the median? Why, like, where does the idea come from that it would not reduce speed? So, like, is that a, like, where, what sort of, like, background is that, is that informed from?
Conceptually, just in a traffic calming discussion, when you've got interference on the edges of traffic, whether it be parked cars, whether it be landscaping, in this case, the median provides like an in-board landscaping feature, it tends to slow vehicles down.
Because I, I guess I've read things that say that if, because people aren't as worried about maybe hitting something that isn't also moving, that actually being with the, no median there and cars going this way, that they would actually slow down because there are, there's possibility that there's more of, like, something moving that's sort of narrowing the field of vision versus something that's kind of separating them from the other moving vehicles. Is that part of that conversation? Because that's, I know, and like Councilman Cooper mentioned, in those conversations with the stakeholders and listening to those meetings and kind of what they were wanting, I know it was a big debate about whether to move the median, but this, that conversation kind of seemed to play out that with the idea that removing it actually might help calm traffic because there's not this barrier that's kind of removing other moving vehicles from the driver's field of vision. Is that, is there any room for that in there, or is it just the, I don't know, I'm curious? I see, yes, I see you.
So from my experience, I mean, I haven't heard that part of the discussion. I mean, we're always trying to add features to the edges of roadway, add features to medians if possible, add landscaping, improve lighting. This project's still going to do that. I mean, the intent is to be adding lighting and adding landscaping, adding features, maintaining that on-street parking. And the other one that I didn't mention is narrowing the lanes to 11 feet, which also provides traffic calming. So I think some of these answers really come once the project's constructed and how the community receives the new street enhancement. So it's really hard to totally anticipate what that's going to be when it's all revitalized. You know, we look at streets like Northwestern from around 45th Street that was redone years ago, where we narrowed the lanes, we added the on-street parking, you know, and it definitely provided some new features that have changed Northwestern. I anticipate these will also change 23rd Street much in the same way, but some of it's going to have to wait until we get it constructed.
We'll see how it affects people's behavior, yeah. But I just kind of want to add that, because I know, I remember that being part of the conversation, that there is some idea out there from some planner types who look at all of these sorts of behaviors that, that actually removing it might help traffic calming, even if that's not sort of the standing common sense sort of idea, so.
Can I say, I'm sorry, this is really a good conversation. Only reason I say that is because we're looking at street enhancements on Northeast 23rd Street, and this is a conversation that most of the people have had with me, is they want medians to traffic calm, when in fact, clearly, we're hearing a conversation that it is just something you put in the street. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to calm traffic. So this is, I just, while some may, may huff at the conversation, which I don't think you should care, this is a relevant conversation because we're looking at street enhancement projects along other parts, and, and quite frankly, as we look at what's happening on Northwest 23rd Street, this will be a continuum to Northeast 23rd Street for it to be a full, you know, way to engage and connect our travelers that will be on both sides of 23rd. So continue, please.
No, I'm so glad you mentioned that, because we got to wield that into existence, that continuity. When we funded a streetscape in Maps 4 for the corridor you were talking about, the Clara Looper corridor from 235 to I-35, it was always this idea that people would become more comfortable traveling east to west by foot, by bike, by transit, by car, all of the above. And right now, you can only do that by one, right? It's just true. I would really hope, and it's my request, in fact, that these disadvantages, I'd like to kind of see item by item as we head into the final report, what further mitigations we're putting in place to address if we anticipate traffic speeds increasing, even with this median conversation, like, then what can we be doing between this report and the final report to do traffic calming additionally? What can we do, number two, to address, you know, where we see that this approach does not eliminate conflict points at intersections, then what can we be doing at those intersections? Is it bump outs that go further out in terms of the narrowing of the road, right? There are other things. I'm sure, again, we have a very talented Planning and Public Works team here, but I'd like to know what we're going to do in terms of further eliminating those points of conflict at the intersection. Number three, what are we going to do about the, you know, high number of traffic accidents likely to continue? That's important, not just, we just passed Vision Zero, right? This plan to, you know, address these high number of traffic incidents. It just strikes me as counterintuitive, then, that we would spend $6.3 million and not address those things here. And then the long crossing distances at the intersections. And number five, you even see here increases the opportunity for left turn to U-turn. So what are we, I guess, point by point by point, I'm not saying it's perfectly eliminated these concerns, but what are we doing to at least reduce there? And the reason why I wanted to see this projected for everybody is because when you look at the number-one thing under advantages, it is meet driver expectations. I'm not, I'm sorry, like, that should not be the priority for literally one of the most walkable corridors, even for all of its faults that I have just laid out, that this report, this engineering report just laid out. The Paseo, Uptown, this area of town is a place where people want to walk to the bars, the restaurants, the art shops, whatever it is. They are not interested in prioritizing meeting driver expectations. That is part of it. It is part of it. It is pedestrian, bike, driving, it's all of the above. It's all of the above. This report prioritizes at the top the advantage of meets driver expectations. In fact, when you go down the list of expectations, the word pedestrian doesn't show up not one time, not one time, and that is what people are asking for. So that is my ask now, as their elected representative, is can we have a report that comes back that it details for us what we are doing to meet pedestrian expectations? And what can we do about these disadvantages over here? Or is the cake so baked?
So, again, the agenda item today is to approve a project agreement to bring ODOT onboard to help us with the construction. The report's already been approved by the council several months ago. Simply provided the report is informational, just as a request update on the project. I do think that there's the opportunities that we've just discussed where we can bring back as a part of the final plans, responses to the questions today regarding additional traffic calming, what the intersections actually look like when they're finally designed. I think it's going to address many, if not all of those questions that you have, but we don't have the final plans done until later this fall.
That's great.
But the consultant is working diligently to ensure that it's a walkable corridor. The whole reason for removing the median is to give a more walkable space in front of those businesses that doesn't exist today to improve the safety, and I know that wasn't necessarily included in the report, but that is one of the primary functions of the entire project, is to be a walkable district, one that also supports the bus, one that also accounts for the car in a safe manner, so.
I appreciate that. My, my final thing is, I believe I requested sometime this summer, I reached out to Uptown, and it was because someone, a resident, reached out to the owners of Tower Theater that Councilman Hinkle is talking about, and they watched people get hit, three young women get hit at the intersection of 23rd and Walker, and was asking, what are we doing about it? And thankfully, Chad and Chelsea explained, Chad being the owner and Chelsea being the representative of Maps 4 for Ward 2, they explained about the streetscape and what's going on. But in that email thread, they said, but we haven't received an update in a while on this report. And in response, I requested a month, I asked Chelsea, I said, how frequently would your board like to hear updates on this mega project, right? And she was, I was like, what's reasonable? And she said monthly. And so I got that to Director Butler, this request, and seemed like a reasonable request and that there would be movement on it. Maybe that board has received that monthly request, but to my knowledge, Councilwoman Hammond and I have not, and I, a monthly update, and I don't know that the board has either, they haven't told me that they have. And I feel strongly about this, not just for Uptown District, but I love right now what's happening in Paseo, where as the project is under construction, every Tuesday, their board meets with our crew. By the way, I get to go over there sometimes, as I've mentioned previously. You have wonderful crew over there, whether it's city staff, whether it's Rudy, they're doing incredible thoughtful engagement work, constant back and forth. But ahead of these projects, these streetscape projects, like the one Councilwoman's talking about, will come in Maps 4, there should be ongoing monthly communication with these districts, telling them what's coming, even if they're, if the communication is, there is no update. It's kind of like being in a romantic relationship with someone where communication is the key. Communication is the key. The moment you stop talking and you take the love for granted is the moment the relationship starts to fall apart. I'm sorry, I don't know what else to tell you. Not only do I study public policy, I study psychology. So what can we do? Can we get a commitment to this monthly update? And if not, can someone explain to me why we cannot?
So Jeff, do you all have, I would say for us, that the issue would be that we would update as frequently as needed, because times, there's times that things aren't changing on a monthly basis. So it's just not every single month that we have something changing, but we can commit to having ongoing dialogue and providing information to them.
Yeah, certainly, Jeff Butler, Planning Director. Sorry, I don't have a response right, right handy, but I've texted and to see, we passed along that request, and my understanding is that we do have communications with the, with the district, but we'll make sure that we do, on a monthly basis, have an organized kind of, hey, here's the status of the plans, the street enhancement, and so on, on a monthly basis. We can do that.
I really appreciate that, and I hear what you're saying, City Manager, but what, what happens unfortunately within that vacuum is then that's where the negative voices can emerge, being like, oh, the city isn't doing its job, we have no idea, and you just don't want, I don't want anything to fill that vacuum. I want to make sure that there's regular communication, transparency, sunlight, those sorts of things, so I really appreciate that. And otherwise, again, I just, I'll conclude by saying this, I really appreciate this back and forth, I really appreciate the two council members, or three council members joining in on that. Like, it's very important that, you know, we have these sorts of policy conversations, and sometimes in public, so that, you know, iron sharpens iron. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a presentation scheduled on Item BF.
Yes, Chris York, our Budget Director, will give us a presentation on this proposed budget amendment.
Good morning. So this item is the introduction to the first budget amendment of fiscal year 2024. It's primarily concerned with our purchase order rollover process, which is our routine annual process we do every year about this time. And as a reminder, this is involving purchase orders that were opened last year, fiscal year 2023, that weren't able to be completed because the item or the service wasn't received before the end of the fiscal year. And so as we do receive those items or services in fiscal year 2024, we pay the bill with fiscal year 2024 money, but that unfortunately leaves our department short on the adopted budget that you approved for the Department for Fiscal Year 2024's mission. The amendment today moves forward those unexpended funds from the prior year into FY24 for the Department so that they are made whole again. The entire purchase order rollover is about 8.7 million, and the largest piece of that is going to be the general fund at 4.5 million dollars. There is one other section to the amendment today, and that is an increase to our Stormwater Drainage Utility Fund of 4.5 million dollars. In July, we had a weather event that damaged two bridges over the North Canadian River at Hefner and Britton Roads, and it's expected that the 4.5 million is needed to put those bridges back into working order. Altogether, that gets us to a $13.2 million amendment today for introduction, and then would amend our budget to $1.92 billion. Again, this is an introduction, so we'll bring it back to you alongside a public hearing on September 12th. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, that concludes our comments on the consent docket. We can adopt it now, except for the item that was previously struck 9K. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes when you are able. Passes unanimously. Item 10 is the concurrence docket. We have items A through E we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, Item 11 are items requiring separate votes, and we have Item 11A. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 11800 Southwest 104th from PUD 1103 to PUD 1957. Councilwoman Peck.
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak?
Joy, you've signed up for the first few items. Do you wish to make your?
No.
Okay, noted.
Thank you, Joy.
Then no.
Okay, there were no protests, so I'll move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11B is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 8800 North Kelly from R1 to SPUD 1538. The item was deferred from August 15th. Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you. I know I have a representative for the applicant here, and I appreciate him for being here. I was able to refer to Mr. Campbell, who was here at our last meeting, and he referenced eight-foot fence, asking for us to, to agree to the eight-foot fence, and he mentioned, and you can help me with, with what we can do with that, as far as if there, if it would be a wood fence, he was saying that there would probably need to be some repairs or upgrades, depending on the wear and tear of five years, but if we're able to put a good fence up, fine. He did mention metal stone or some type of privacy fence, so I'm hoping we can figure out something for him in that regard.
I'm Randy Hill with ED Hill, 510 Concord Drive. Yes, you know, I've looked at that since you and I've visited and visited with our, with the client. We can, we can put up a fence, we would think an eight-foot, I mean, an eight-foot fence might be a little high, but a six-foot fence, particularly with the elevation that falls off when you go back to the east, it would have the effect of almost an eight-foot fence. And, but we'd be happy to put in a, we'd like to do a six-foot fence if possible. We also agreed to a bunch of other items as a part of the negotiation of this SPUD. Planning Commission Chairman Kamal Pennington tried to set up a meeting with the neighbors, and they refused to come, but we went ahead and put in specific items in the spud that the neighbors had mentioned, such as they didn't want two-story houses looking down on them, they wanted the houses to be built of, of a brick or stone or rock, and they wanted there to be access only to Kelly, and we've done all those things, obviously. The Planning Commission also asked for a few extra things, trees to be planted and such along our frontage, but we can, we can definitely put a fence up around it as, as well, between us and that property owner to the east. We'd rather do six-foot than eight-foot, but we'll do whatever you, you all think.
Well, I, I don't disagree with you, that eight-foot is, is quite high, and I'm with you. So let's, I'll, I'll talk to him, and if he can assure me as far as maybe, let's look at if, if we're not able, I would, his suggestion, metal stone or some other type of privacy fence, are we able to do that?
Yes, we'll do a privacy fence.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so I will ask that we, I don't think we need to amend the application for that. So I will ask that we, I don't think we need to amend the application for that, but I want to ensure that that is added. Maybe that could be a TE amendment to this application. I will do that so we can make sure that it's in the language. So I would like to amend this application to add that a privacy fence of six feet will be added to this evaluation.
Okay, so Jeff, can you help articulate, what is it we're amending? And, and we need to vote on that?
I'm sorry, the, the, the privacy fence?
Uh-uh. Does this need to be voted on?
Yes, if we, if we want to change that, just make it part of the TE.
Okay, so we're going to amend the TE?
Yes.
Okay.
That's literally what I just said. Thank you.
We agree to that.
Thank you.
Okay. So we've got a motion. We'll bring that up virtually to amend the TE. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Now, I would like to approve the application as amended.
All right, we have a motion and a second for item 11B. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All right, item 11C is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 234 Southeast 45th Street from R1 to SPUD 1539. Councilman Stone, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. It's definitely recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, and I think they did a great job with amending the TEs in this thing, so I'll go ahead and move it forward for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. This is for item 11C. Passes unanimously. 11D is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 7500 South Council from AA to SPD 1542. Councilwoman Peck, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. The Planning Commission recommended approval subject to the summary of technical evaluations, and there's an easement, so with seeing no protest, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11E is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, establishing a special permit to operate use unit 8300.33 Drinking Establishments in the PUD 422 Urban Design Overlay and 23rd Street Uptown Overlay. Councilman Cooper, the applicant, is available for questions. Barely need to speak.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd love to hear from the applicant, maybe not so much questions, but maybe tell us a little bit more about what you're up to over here.
Hello, good morning. My name is Emmanuel Pogge. I'm originally from Ghana, but I've been in Oklahoma for 11 years now, so I'm an Okie. I had the concept of building a hookah lounge where people from all different walks of life can come in, sit down and enjoy daily theme music, either jazz, Afrobeat music, just, just to cater to different kinds of groups of people after work, African food, different type of cuisine. And I did get my food license and just trying to break the gap and also make additional profits. We deemed it necessary to add liquor to our operation, so I did apply for a liquor license, and I was determined that I needed a special permit for the zone that I was in, or I am in. So I went ahead and applied for it, and at this time, I'm just seeking guidance from different people, like the police department, and also working closely with security, just to make sure that I am providing the services that would not actually interrupt with the day-to-day operations and, and then the area that I am in. That being said, getting approval for my liquor license would go a long way to help me continue to stay in the area that I'm in.
Well, while I can't help you with that side of things, I can address this, this vote today, and I would just say I would move for approval.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
To Ghana, welcome Emmanuel to Word 2.
Thank you.
11F is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, establishing a special permit to operate use unit 8300.33 Drinking Establishments in the I1 and HNO overlays at 2401 Shoal Avenue. And Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed up to speak.
I have a lot of questions about this particular use and also the notice for this particular application, and I'm, I still haven't been able to get all the answers that I desire. My, my concern, and I'll let you all know this for sure as well, for there to be a notice of 300 feet, I'm, I'm curious to know how, how we were able to determine that in comparison to a 600-feet radius with this I2 and Office and other closer to it than the R1 that's next to it. So I'm, I'm curious as far as the notice. Also pertaining to this particular area of our community, similar to what I had discussed and we talked and heard through a few weeks ago, I have had quite a few incidents that have occurred ultimately because of those incidents, deaths happening in this area, and the fact that I'm already seeing, I went up there yesterday. I couldn't, I don't understand why I was, I wasn't able to go in, but there's already a sign up that says hookah lounge, and we haven't even approved a permit for it. So I am going to ask that we, I want to look at this a little further, so I'm going to ask that we continue this for a couple of weeks while I get some, some of my questions answered and especially work to determine why, why we looked at 300 feet and not 600 feet for this location notification of this application request.
All right, we have a motion to defer item 11F and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item is deferred two weeks, right? Okay, 11G is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, closing and vacating portions of platted street alleys and easements east and west of North Hudson. I'm sorry? Jeff, can you, are you the applicant for the last item? Jeff, can you maybe meet with him outside? Thanks. Okay, 11G is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, closing and vacating portions of platted street alley and easements east and west of North Hudson between 10th and 11th. Councilwoman Hammond, no one has signed up to speak.
Yes, this is a pretty simple request for the Family Justice Center funded through MAPS 4, just to close easements for development, so I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11H is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing a no parking anytime restriction on the south side of Northwest 15th from Blackwelder around Blackwelder and 15th. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11I is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing two reserved parking spaces for the physically disabled within a setback area on the north side of Northeast 4th near Kelly. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11J is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing a 45-degree reverse angle parking within a setback parking area on the north side of Northeast 4th from Kelly to Stonewall. Councilwoman Nice, it does look like, Joy, you've signed up to speak on this item?
I signed up for I and J.
Okay.
Hello, Joy Reardon, 125 Northwest 9. I just wanted to get some clarification on I and J. Is that going to be on Kelly or is it going to be on 4th Street?
On 4th Street.
Okay, the city just spent a bunch of money putting in brand-new sidewalks, so they're getting ripped out for parking?
No. To my knowledge, that's not what they are doing. I know.
On 4th Street from?
Joy, I, I don't want to set this precedent. This, these are opportunities to make comments.
Yeah.
It's not a, it's not a Q and A. If we have questions, we're always happy to get staff with you out in the, out of the lobby, okay?
Okay, but it, it is a comment that.
Make, make your comment, then.
I did.
Thank you.
Why would she put new sidewalks or rip them out?
Okay. All right, we're still on item 11J. Councilwoman Nice.
Okay, we'll ask that we move for approval. And Mr. Winger, can you answer that for her? From Ms. Joy.
Thank you, Eric Quinger, Public Director. On Northeast 4th, the city did install some new sidewalks along the corridor. This private development may have some impact in a short block of where this new parking is going to be adjusted, but it would only impact those sidewalks where the parking, and it would be done privately, not by the city. The rest of the sidewalks will remain as constructed.
Can I ask a question? Actually, this reminds me of a conversation I've had with a resident about 4th Street and the, it's been included, I believe, since 2017 in the BikeWalk OKC plan to have bike lanes on 4th Street. Does this, because especially if it's angled, a reverse angle, okay, that's better, but I just, will that affect the possibility of a 4th Street bike lane plan? I've just not gotten.
So one of the, one of the features that the developers proposed is a reverse angle to be bicycle compatible. Should a bicycle lane come in the future? We don't currently have a bike plan today, though, for that, for that stretch.
Okay, thank you.
But it is in BikeWalk.
And, and with the South of 8 plan, it was included as far as what the residents and the people envisioning South of 4th wanted was a protected bike lane, so it would still be able to protect that. Thank you, Mr. Winger.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on item J. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 11K was previously struck, which brings us to 11L, which is an ordinance on final hearing relating to streets and sidewalks, amending Chapter 50 of the code. This relates to impact fees. This was presented two meetings ago, a hearing held at the last meeting. The council could move for final adoption today. Got a motion and a second. Or, there we go. Cast your votes when you can. Passes unanimously. Item 11M is an ordinance to be introduced today, set for public hearing September 12th, final hearing September 26th, and I think we have a presentation.
Yeah, on this one, this is just an item on our council, council meeting schedule. Typically, you know, we'll start in May and June and do every week meetings so that we can have our budget meetings, and in this schedule coming up this next year, we need to change that. Typically, it says the first week in May we'll begin the every week meeting. This will allow us to do it the last week in April, just because of the way the calendar falls.
Okay, well, that was a brief presentation. All right, well, then we could go ahead and take a motion to introduce it. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item is introduced, public hearing at our next meeting, final vote in two meetings from now. All right, item 11N is an ordinance to be introduced and set for public hearing on September 12th and final hearing on September 26th, and we have a presentation on this as well.
Yes, Chris York, our Budget Director, will give us a presentation. This is in relation to the supplemental ambulance service, transport service that we're implementing, and I wanted to stress again, like Chris probably will in his presentation, but that this is set, this allows us to have access to these funds for our services, but it's supplemental to Emsa. This is working in partnership with Emsa. It's not replacing anything. Emsa's still our primary provider, just complements those services and works in line with them.
Thank you, City Manager. So the item today intros an ordinance to amend the Medical Services Program Section of the Municipal Code. You may recall that we forecasted this action for you back during the budget development process with F.I.R.'s budget presentation. Council ultimately adopted a budget for the Fire Department that included 40 additional positions that would staff a supplemental medical transport program within the Fire Department. As we discussed at that time, the revenue or funding source for those additional positions and for that operation would be the Medical Services Program Fund, but there would need to be some language changes to the ordinance in order to access those funds. And so fast forward to today, I'll just cover some of the language changes in the ordinance and answer any questions that you might have. First, we're adding the city as a service provider alongside of Emsa, so we'll be able to provide those same ambulance services and all of that, that that entails. So we'll be able to assign benefits from folks who need to file claims against their health insurance to fund the city services and so on. In addition to that, we do have some minor cleanup language, switching from the older he slash she to a more gender-neutral language of they. And then we also expand on this idea of rate stabilization. Rate stabilization exists in the current writing, and it's really any action that the city could take to try to maintain a flat cost for our residents who opt into the program. We've been able to maintain that opt-in cost for about 14 years now, so we've been doing a good job. What this language does is expands upon that idea by adding the supplemental medical transport itself as a rate stabilization action that the city has taken. To give you an example of that, during this last year, our partners in Emsa have had a hard time keeping up with staffing, and so they've needed to hire temporary staffing, which was much more expensive than having a full-time employee. And that resulted in about a million-dollar increase to our contract with Emsa in this last year. The thought being, if we can supplement that capacity with an additional 40 personnel on our side, we might alleviate some of that pressure on Emsa to have to increase their charges to us. In addition to that, there is also some language that prioritizes usage of the fund, and so in the case where the Medical Services Program Fund could not fund both Emsa and the F.I.R.'s program, Emsa would get first priority on those funds. I can tell you that's a non-issue. We have a very healthy fund balance of around $11 million that can fund both operations, and our expected revenue can also fund both operations, but in the event that that did occur, that language is there. And really, that's all the highlights that I have for you this morning. Again, this is the introduction, so we will bring it back to you on the 12th with a final hearing scheduled on the 26th. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, well, we can move for introduction. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item is introduced and will be set for public hearing on September 12th, final hearing September 26th. This brings us to 11O, the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, and so we will advance to the resolution found at O2 declaring that the structures are dilapidated. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, 11P, 1 and 2 was previously struck, which brings us to 11Q, the public hearing for the unsecured structures here listed, except for those previous. for the unsecured structures here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
So we will advance to the resolution found at Q2 declaring that structures are unsecured. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11R1 is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
So we will advance to the resolution found at 11R2 declaring that the buildings are abandoned. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, 11S is the public hearing regarding the joint resolution with the OCPPA declaring 2.68 acre tract of real property inside the Oklahoma State Fairgrounds as surplus. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we will close the public hearing and advance to 11T. This is a resolution adopting standards and prescribing procedures for the selection and negotiation of contracts with architects and engineers for public improvements.
Eric Quinger, our Public Works Director, will explain this item.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So many of the council are familiar with the selection of architects and engineers for the city and some of its participating trusts. It's a procedure that's actually been adopted by the City Council through resolution, and to give you a brief history, the resolution was originally adopted in 1974. It was amended in 1978, 1980, and it was last amended in 1986. So it's been some time since we've actually modernized the selection procedures. As we've been working for about the past year, there's been a lot of modernization that we can bring to the process. Some of the things to give you an idea of what still happened, consultants pay a $15 subscription fee that allows us to mail them through U.S. Mail notices of all of the projects, but we've also been posting those online for some time. There's also different processes where we've had a professional liaison committee that's not met in more than a decade. This committee was set up should there be a protest or a concern shared on the selection of a project. The committee could be formed, meet, and make recommendations on a resolution, but that has not been necessary for a very long time, and we actually have not had committee members, again, in over a decade. So today, what we're bringing forth to you is an updated consultant selection procedure for your consideration by the council. It makes several changes. We changed the solidification notifications to be electronic instead of by U.S. Mail. We've updated the ranking criteria. This is the criteria that's used by the selection committee to also include local preference, preferring those local vendors over non-local vendors as a part of selection. We're also looking to update the consultant review committee report process, so when consultants are interviewed and a recommendation is made, this council typically receives before it adopts a contract an authorization to negotiate the contract. One of the problems that we've experienced, especially with a lot of increase in the number of projects citywide, including the MAPS projects, is the efficiency in bringing those items to the council and not delaying the negotiations. So as a part of the process update, we would eliminate the authorization to negotiate by the council, but we would bring the negotiated contract to the council for approval, just as we always have. This will save a lot of time in that selection process and allow us to be a lot more efficient during the selection. And then lastly, because the committee has not met in so long, the professional liaison committee would be eliminated from the new process going forward. Should there be a protest on a project or concerns shared, the city manager would be that representative of the city that they could contact for resolution. But with that, what's included in your memo is we would also adopt using the electronic bidding system to get notifications out much more quickly. Upon approval by the council today, it would be effective immediately, and then we would also start doing everything electronic beginning in October of 2023. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the item.
I'm just curious to know if in sort of looking back at the original approval and amendments, kind of why that step of getting authorization to negotiate was included in the process? Was it just like another step to check for if anybody did have concerns to come forward, or was there other reasons for that?
You know, I don't know, and I could only speculate. So having worked for the city for more than 28 years and having worked in contracts for a lot of that time, I mean, I don't know that that's ever come up. I have to just assume that maybe it was just another step in the process, just to ensure the council that they were okay in proceeding. But in the councils that I've worked for, including this one, you know, that concern has just never come up. And again, maintaining that opportunity to approve the contract or to not approve the contract once negotiated completes, making sure that nothing goes forward until the council approves.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, this is for adoption today, the resolution 11T that Eric just briefed on. We can take a motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 11U1 is a resolution authorizing the municipal councillor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Grasham v. City of OKC. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item V1 is a joint resolution with MFA authorizing Colin Zorn and Wagner to represent Callaway, Michael Callaway, in the case of Maldonado v. Prater. Executive session is not requested by staff.
I would like to motion that we enter into executive session for this item.
Okay. We might bring up, yeah, there we go. There we go. We have a motion to go into executive session on this item. Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Fails 2 to 6. So we're back on V1. We can take a motion for that.
I know, we're not.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes 6 to 2. Item W1 is a joint resolution with MFA authorizing Colin Zorn and Wagner to represent city employee Michael Kleeka in the case of Mitchell v. Kleeka. Staff has not requested executive session.
I would like to move that we enter into executive session. I think especially given that this name is very familiar from another recent case like this, I'd like to hear more information from our legal staff.
Okay. Bring that up for a motion. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Cast your votes. Fails 2 to 6. We're back on 11W1, the joint resolution. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes 6 to 2. 11X1 is a release of all claims and settlement agreement with MA Architecture and Smith Roberts Baldishweiler. Okay, got it. Sure, related to claim number, the number is identified on the agenda. Executive session is not requested by staff. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11Y1 is collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI for the fiscal year we're currently in, 2023, 2024, retroactive to July 1st. Executive session is not requested, but certainly congratulations to the city manager and his team for getting this far.
Well, thank you, and I would like to recognize Amy and Trey and the team, really, it was a full team working together on our side, and Bruce Davis and his team working together to get this resolved. It's one of the earliest agreements that we've had, and I really appreciate the work of everyone pulling together to get this accomplished, so thank you all.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We have a couple of related items now. 11Z is a resolution approving the general nonrepresented pay plan established for full-time, regular-budgeted employees excluded from coverage by AFSMI. We have a motion and a second. Oh. Well, on the screen, it's, on my screen, it says Z.
Up there, it says Y.
On that screen, it says Y, but on our voting screens, it says Z. Yes. Yeah, it's not letting us make a second.
Do a verbal second.
All right, does anyone like to make a verbal second? All right, and then you want to take a verbal vote?
I say yes, or I?
I think we got to go.
Okay.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay, item 11AA is a resolution approving pay plans for management, administrative, and technical support positions, et cetera, for this fiscal year, and we'd love to take a motion if we can. All right, we'll go around the horseshoe again. Aye. Passes unanimously. All right, 11AB1 is a second extension of a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 123 until successor contract is agreed upon for this fiscal year or September 29th of this year, whichever occurs first. Executive session is requested on this, and so why don't we take a vote on AB2 to potentially go into executive session to discuss AB1? All right, we'll just do it verbally then. Nobody take, somebody make a motion? Got a motion over here, second over here. Oh, wait, it's working. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously to go into executive session. We'll handle that item AB2 at the end of our other business. Item AC is just an executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations with the IAF, Local 157. We can take a vote on that. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll handle that at the end of our other business. AD1 is a claim recommended for denial. Executive session is not requested. Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. AE1 is a claim recommended for approval. Executive session is not requested. Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we've reached item 12, items for, comments from council. Award one?
None today, sir, thank you.
Award two?
Yes. So first, I just have three items. First, as a yellow jacket, like someone who graduated from Choctaw High School in 2000, I just wanted to acknowledge the shooting which occurred on a field where I spent many Friday nights watching football, which might shock some people, but I definitely watched a lot of football games there, and I'm really heartbroken to see that shooting occur. I'm really sad, of course, and send much love to the family of the person who lost their life, and then those who found themselves touched by a bullet who are still alive, because that too brings with it trauma, right, and the healing that must begin from that. I've said it a million times, and I keep saying that we have solutions to moments like what occurred in Choctaw. I have cited from this horseshoe research, peer-reviewed research, that says that if we were to invest at the national level, I'm guessing it would take a partnership with our states, but if we were to invest $35 billion, we could hire at $70,000 a year 500,000 mental health counselors embedded in our schools to help identify these students ahead of time, because I promise you, while we still don't know exactly the details of the fight which occurred that led to one of our people shooting another person because they were arguing, while we don't know those details, I can almost assure everybody that there is a backstory, and whatever was haunting the individual who took this action, we could have caught earlier. We could have, there were, I can almost assure everybody, that's just always what happens. There's a history. So I don't think thoughts and prayers are enough. I don't think condolences are enough. I think it's action, and I'm just going to keep reminding everybody that we know what the solutions are. On that note, you know, OCU last week was its first week back, and my students are learning about Aristotle and how to write arguments and the different modes to make argument, and when we don't teach our students that history of rhetoric, that history of how to create arguments, and we don't teach them conflict resolution, this is the result. When we don't prioritize writing and critical thinking and that history, this is the result. I am not a parent, as you all know, but as you heard from our Teacher of the Year, us teachers take our students' lives very seriously. So it was horrifying this week when I was watching the 1996 critically acclaimed film Scream with my students to study genre and how it works, and I asked them a very simple question, what did you think of this film? And one of the students, freshmen, told that class he did not find the film scary. He does not find the film scary. He appreciated its component parts, but he didn't find it scary, and here's why. He said to his classmates and to me that a psycho killer does not scare him. It does not scare his classmates. What scares him are these mass shooters who, by now, these kids, they tell me, are just living through them with a regularity almost with which I refill my water. That's what these kids said to me. The kids said this. No prompting from me. He then said that mental health, that maybe the reason why these movies that have supernatural elements to them, demons, right, these sorts of things, he told me, and I was a bit shocked to hear this, that the reason he suspected that movies with demons in them are so popular right now is that our kids are recognizing instinctively the metaphor, that the demon represents the substance abuse, the addiction, the internal trauma. We, we are barely a week into school. I have not brought any of the scholarship that is ultimately gonna kind of talk about that with them. This kid recognized it immediately. That means our students know what's haunting them. They know, and they're just waiting for us, as elected officials, to do something about it. So, I, I would hope, though we can't do $35 billion at the city level, you know, we have the foundation of something called Embrace OKC, and it just sort of is in the wings. Like, we haven't followed up on it, I don't know where we are with it. And I'm, you're not hearing the frustration in my voice right now because I'm doing everything in my power to not bring it to bear right now. Because if I were, I'd likely be incoherent. While we wait, while we wait, our kids are dying. While we wait, if they're not dying, they are afraid they are about to die. I've never taught a class before, and I've been doing this, it's my 15-year anniversary of teaching, 15 years this semester. I have never taught a class before where the students articulate to me that level of fear, never. I have never heard what I heard this week, it's messing with me. So I just, I, yeah, so that's, that's my concern on that. Okay. The next thing is unfortunately, and it was a really difficult thing to experience, but while I was teaching yesterday, I got a text from a resident who lives near I-44 in Penn, and she let me know, she sent me a photo. I-44 in Penn were a pillar, someone had written some really threatening language. It was, "In words die." And they had done it in feces, and then went to the other side of the pillar to start doing it there. I had several residents reach out to me to let me know what had happened, and were just really worried about their children seeing that, them seeing that, me, their elected representative, who is biracial black, seeing that. And the residents reaching out to me were white, because we're a majority-white ward that made history when they elected me as the first openly queer and blacker bi, black biracial person outside of Ward 7 where the Honorable Nikki Nice serves. This stuff's hard. City manager, fellow council members, those of you watching at home, but especially the people in this room with me today, it is nearly soul-crushing to, to receive a photo image with that language on it while I'm in a classroom where I've just described to you what my students are saying to me. And when someone texted me last night at 8:30 saying, "It's still up, it's still up," I hopped on my bike and biked from Paseo to I-44 in Penn to see for myself if it was still up, because this text had happened around 4. And I really want to thank council staff Boyd Fulton for working very quickly to find the right department to, to get it removed. And I want to thank city manager and Public Works Director Winger for getting it washed off. But when I got there last night after it was washed, it was, the remnants were still there, I could read it. That's really hard, knowing the history of my ward. We made history, but preceding us were covenants that said that someone like me couldn't own a home in that ward. So when I see that language, it reopens old wounds, not just for me, but for the diversity of people who call the ward home. And it exists within a national context where you all saw over the weekend in Jacksonville where a white man wearing a mask, which by the way, is what happens in Scream, went and shot, targeted black people at a family dollar on the anniversary of the March on Washington? It, it's just, Tim Heidecker, the comedian, was in town last week at Tower. I went to go see him, and he concluded that show with a song that was about, "We're moving backwards." The mayor of Jacksonville, when she spoke, got up and said, "I worry, we're moving backwards." Y'all, as a council mayor, we did some incredible work together over the last four years. The public safety reforms you all set in motion, your Human Rights Commission, that is amazing, almost against all odds that we have done that, but the backlash against our work is intense, and it's murderous. And I just need us to acknowledge it? And I, I, I don't know. I, I, I hope that we are able to, I don't know. There is a delusion which exists when it comes to how we think of other people. And I'll just conclude by pointing out that I think it's as old as the Confederacy. There's an article from The Atlantic called "The Nationalist Delusion." I just want to read a couple paragraphs for you, I just think we have to reckon with this. As the vice, I'm reading now, "As the Vice President of the Confederacy, Alexander Stephens in his 1861 cornerstone speech articulated that the principle on which the Confederate states had been founded was the quote, 'Great truth' that the Negro is not equal to the white man, that slavery, subordination to the superior race, is his natural and normal condition." That was the Vice President of the Confederacy in his cornerstone, cornerstone speech, excuse me, going into that Civil War. "And that principle was echoed by declarations of succession, secession, excuse me, from almost all Southern states." Here's where things get intriguing for our present moment. Sitting in his cell at Fort Warren years later, the rebels defeated and the Confederacy vanquished, Stephens had second thoughts. He insisted in his diary, quote, "The reporter's notes, which were very imperfect, were hastily corrected by me and were published without further revision and with several glaring errors." In fact, Stephens wrote, "He didn't like slavery at all." Quote, this is from the Vice Presidency of the Confederacy. Quote, "My own opinion of slavery, as often expressed, was that if the institution was not the best, or could not be made the best for both races, looking to the advancement and progress of both, physically and morally, it ought to be abolished. Great improvements were, however, going on in the conditions of blacks in the South," he wrote. "Much greater would have been made, I verily believe, but for outside agitation." End quote. And The Atlantic goes on to say, "Stephens had become the first in a line to the presidency of the Confederacy, an entity founded to defend white people's right to own black people as chattel. But that didn't mean he possessed any hostility toward black people, for whom he truly only wanted the best. The real problem was the crooked media, which had taken him out of context." He goes on to say that Southerners were ready to sacrifice property, life, and everything for the lost cause, which was simply the right of self-government. "Slavery had but little influence with the masses," he wrote. That man rewrote his own history four years later, rewrote it four years later. He was so proud to say that slavery, he was so proud to say that black people were literally by God less than. He was so proud to say it, he wrote it down. And then, four years later in jail, said, "No, I didn't," like a seven-year-old. And I think that's what's happening today. We don't teach this history. In fact, we have people right now working actively to remove this history, because to talk about this history is somehow reverse racism. What? I am convinced, and I'll conclude here, convinced, that if we taught this history, if we were open and honest about the wounds which are festering, I think some of these people who are committing these shootings, who are writing literal white supremacist manifestos that they want us to read, that they want to know, they want us to know their pain, I think with a little bit of mental health access and a little bit of access to our history, they would not be susceptible to these demagogues telling them that in present day, black people are responsible for their pain, that black people are trying to rape and murder them. And that's what they're putting in these manifestos. They are putting in these manifestos that they have to go stop us before we do this to them. That is what they are saying. So we can get up here on council, and we can pass these things, and we can do these things, and they are all well and good, but we have got to acknowledge this history. We've got to do everything we can to prioritize the mental health of our people, and we're just not. And the longer we do, the more our kids are in mortal danger, mortal danger. And they know it, and they feel it, and they are waiting for us to do something about it. So I would hope that by the end of this week, I get an update about where we are with Embrace OKC and our kids' improved access to mental health care. Their literal lives depend on it, and I am gonna keep saying this until we do something about it.
Well, Councilman, we will get you an update on the Embrace OKC, where they are and what's still happening, because there is still, there is still action going with that. I know that they'd love to be able to go more, go further, and they're still raising funds with that, but we'll get you an update.
Word three? Word five?
Thank you, Mayor. In the deep dark recesses of Ward 5, where Ward 5, Ward 4, and Ward 6 all kind of come together in amongst the pawn shops and the weed dispensaries and everything, there's a standalone restaurant called Sherry's Diner. The Oklahoman put out a survey, and of 38 restaurants, and this encompasses everything from sushi and Thai food to steaks, Sherry's Diner won second place in the lunch category. And then they continued to win first place in the all-around, the breakfast, the brunch, the country cooking, and the dinner for the money, and the diner category. So if you guys haven't tried Sherry's Diner down in Southwest 59th, get down and tell Annie hello, it's a great place to eat. But seven out of 38 categories in first place is pretty amazing for a family-owned restaurant that's been around for 20 or 30 years. Secondly, last Thursday, two Thursdays ago, I was fortunate enough to go on a ride along with the Santa Fe Division Police Department on the afternoon shift, and after my orientation crammed into the Ford Taurus that I probably couldn't fold myself out of if I had to get out quick, and him telling me that, "Here's the button that you push in case I'm getting shot or beat up, and there'll be somebody here quickly," we blasted off out of there and went to an attempted suicide, followed by an attempted murder, followed by some high school kid's dad beating out of another high school kid because the dad wanted the two kids to fight, and when his kid lost, the dad beat him up. And then we went to gather our breath and sit in the shade for a second, because it was 110 degrees, and I don't know what was said over the radio, but we ended up 80 miles an hour down Western at 6 o'clock on a Thursday afternoon to a rape and progress. Yep, all this is in one of the first two and a half hours of me getting in this car. We ended up the evening at about midnight at the Southern Oaks Library, down at 240 and Walker, basically. There was a unhomed lady in distress who was trying to break into the library, and we helped her find her way. And as we're leaving, we notice a older Chevy Suburban sitting in the parking lot, and this thing had a lady and seven kids in there that was, the oldest kid was barely big enough to hold the youngest kid, and she had a flat tire, and it was midnight, and she didn't have any place to go. And so the three officers that were with me spent the next hour underneath her car trying to figure out how to get the spare tire down, and we changed her tire for her. Not once did we hide behind a billboard to catch a speeder, which really kind of hurt my feelings. I thought that's what police did. But the time I spent on that one day, we have a lot to be proud of with our police department. We didn't take a single person to jail, we didn't belittle anybody, and we were nothing but help. So, that's it for me.
Thank you, word six.
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you to a few staff, specifically Assistant City Manager Jason Fairbrush. The last couple of Tuesdays, we've had appointments to go meet with 988, go tour the Crisis Center out on General Pershing, and just meet with different staff and partners that are involved in behavioral health crisis response to learn kind of how things are going. It's been a year since 988 was launched here in Oklahoma, and, and just talk through and have some relationships with those entities as the city is embarking on some crisis response staff and program. So I really appreciate his willingness to fit that into what I know is a very busy schedule and all the work that he and his staff are doing around that, that initiative. And then I also want to thank Kristin Torkelson with Embark and the Bus Rapid Transit. I've had a handful of requests that have come from residents, and then also from my own observations around some of the construction that's been happening related to the bus rapid transit stops. And whenever I sent requests, I know one of them was for some like high weeds growing on, at a, at a stop that had been constructed in front of a business. And when they reached out to me, I asked, "Have you asked Kristin yet?" And they're like, "Oh duh, why haven't we asked Kristin?" And the next time I saw them, they said she was super helpful, just like, super on top of it. And I've experienced the same thing with when I've asked about different construction related to some closed bus stops along what is now the Route 5 and will be the Northwest BRT line. So I just really appreciate their responsiveness, both to business owners, residents, even just my own observations of seeing people waiting at bus stops because they, they didn't seem to recognize that it was closed, and, and being able to put up some temporary stops and some signage and information. So I just really appreciate their responsiveness and their commitment to really serving residents, kind of going above and beyond and not just always, and if they, if they miss something because they don't have eyes on it, just being really responsive to getting that feedback and, and doing what they can to provide that, that level of service. So I just want to appreciate them and just appreciate their, the way they, they handle themselves and make themselves available to, to staff and residents.
Thank you, word seven.
Yes. First, I wanted to mention the passing of one of our, our pastors within Oklahoma City, Reverend WB Parker. He passed away, I believe it was last Sunday, at the age of 102. And Pastor Parker was the pastor for 46 years at Loving St. James Baptist Church in Spencer, Oklahoma. He was an educator, and most importantly, he was a participant in the CATS drugstore sit-ins, as well as the sanitation worker strike that happened in Oklahoma City. He was a, a very nice man. So to be deemed one of those is, is very special for him to live as long as he did. And one of the things that's mentioned in the bio that I read was that he lived his motto, "What you give lives." So to his family, I wanted to offer our condolences because that is a true loss for Oklahoma City with the loss of Pastor Parker. And even in Spencer, there was a, I believe, a school was named after him in his honor because of the instrumental work in education and, and scholarships and the things that he did to give back to our youth. And he's a graduate of Langston University. So, again, 102, as we, we celebrate the life of Reverend Parker. Also, want to mention today is the 100th birthday for Mrs. Ella Louise Hawkins-Tally. There was a party that was held for her this Saturday where she is a resident at the Temple Gardens Senior Apartments. And Ms., Ms. Hawkins-Tally is, she was, she's still a member of the St. John Missionary Church. She's been a member there for 75 years. And this young lady is active even at her age. And one of the things that is mentioned in her program for the program that they had this past Saturday was that she had the unusual but blessed opportunity to live under the presidential administrations of 18 United States presidents. That's a lot. That's a lot of presidents to live under and understand and be a part of all of those walks of life. And she retired after working for various families doing domestic care. So Ms. Ella Louise Hawkins-Tally, we celebrate you on today. Happy 100th birthday. Also, wanted to mention, we kind of talked in our agenda, there's some improvements that are happening within the Katy Trail of our community, and the bridges are now up to help with those overpasses, so you can definitely see the movement that's happening around there as well. And something that just came out on yesterday, so we'll try to talk more about that, is the Crescent Hills Elementary revisioning, in that RFP is now open, and we're gonna talk more about that because we're gonna have a Ward Seven Town Hall on September 11th from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Willa D. Johnson Recreation Center. So we hope you all will be there to hear more about that and some other things that are happening within our community. And I wanted to take time to thank Councilperson Cooper for being a part of Heartline's annual Champion of Hope Gala that happened this past Friday. And as just mentioned from Councilperson Hammond with the 988 and all of the things that take place pertaining to crisis response, Heartline is 211. So they provide help, hope and information 24 hours a day, and they also are the backup line for 988. So they answer all of those calls as well, and they have a text-to-chat line. So it's very important for us to remember the things that they do and all of the ways that they help serve and have that listening ear, because I can only imagine what people call in their frustrations and concerns, and how important it is to have that listening ear on the other line. So I want to commend all of the people that work there for their service, because I know even for that, they just have to have some self-care for themselves to listen to the things that are happening within our community, our city, and our country. Also wanted to send my condolences to the family of Corday Carter, that young man that we had heard being killed at the football game. And as we were having this Heartline honoring the things that were going on and even people who had attempted suicide, those who had survived, those who had, we lost from just remembering the people that had been a part of all of these things. This was unfolding right down the highway, so very unfortunate to have more of these types of crisis conversations and things that we have to continue to talk through. And one can also, I know we talked about it, may not have, but 65 years of CATS drugstore sit-in that we commemorated last weekend. It was an honor to still see the people, the young people that are now, are seasoned, talk about their experiences. And when you think about that, they're still alive to talk about something that happened that they had to fight for democracy, they're in fight for freedoms as young people that we're still seeing young people fight for today. So for them to have to go through that, and in their lifetime and in our lifetime, we still have reference, it tells you that we're not far removed from the things that have taken place. Which also speaks to what happened this past weekend as we commemorate 60 years of the March on Washington. And I think it's very important for us to also remember Dr. King visited Oklahoma City months, within that same year, but months before this March on Washington in August. And that special relationship, I can't say a lot of cities got to see him, but for him to have a very unique type of relationship with Oklahoma City, I think we don't talk about that enough, and that actually needs to be commemorated and memorialized in a better way for us to talk through. And, you know, just comments that were made during that March on Washington, too. I find it difficult that we can have conversations to thousands of people in Washington DC but refuse to talk to the people who are here in your city that represent those same folks, that look like the people that you talk to in Washington DC. But I digress, because it's clear that that's not important. So those are my comments for today.
Thank you. We're now at item 13. We have Joy Reardon has signed up to speak.
I've been recognized multiple times by our citizens, saying, "They've seen me, yay." I have three items that will probably take me over the three minutes. One is I had an incident with the OCPD officers on Sunday laughing at me because of the fact that they were parked in a handicapped spot, and I asked them to politely move. The other incident is, Councilman Cooper, y'all keep talking about walkability and vested groups. Are y'all even considering ADA groups when y'all go vested? And I have a question for everybody on the horseshoe. Do you know what the number 32 means? 32 years of this, as of this year, do you know what it represents, what it means? The passing of the ADA. And we have come a long way, but yet I sat over there and listened to the saying of, "We've got a vested interest on 23rd Street," of how it's being redone and everything. And I'm wondering how many, how much of the ADA has been, yeah, it looks good, we're doing it per the law and the books, but how about let's take and bring people in that are actual ADA, people that are part of the ADA community on these projects? Maybe we, y'all would get more insight on what we go through on a daily basis. I keep coming back time and time and time again on this. And my third issue is, when I call 911 on a lot of things, they may show up 30 minutes later, 45 minutes later, an hour later. Sometimes they may not show up at all.
30 seconds, please.
Can we, can I at least get some help on some of the issues? Instead of me getting blown off when I call 911 because of me coming down here in front of the city council and everything, being put to the very low end of the priority list. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Joy. All right, we're going to go into executive act to vote on item 11 AB.
All right, we are back from executive session and we have one pending item which is AB1. This is the second extension of collective bargaining agreement with the FOP. And we could take a motion to adopt the extension. With a motion and a second, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We are now at item 14 which is adjournment and we are adjourned.